Item four, 2022, I'll rise for the pledge.
Can I ask for a moment of silence in respect to the North Hammond community lost somebody that was very near and dear for the last 20 years, Father Reverend Vladimir Janasek. Is probably the last Polish-speaking, Polish-born pastor that shepherded Saint Casimir Church and School, and he was a good, gentle, and strong leader, and he will be missed. And a moment of silence, please.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali. Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler. Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here, let the record show nine present, seven in chambers, two on Zoom. Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Nice to be back, nice to see you all. Wanted to cover the past couple of weeks, a couple of other projects I wanted to talk to you about in general. It's good to see you all again. We had, over the last couple of weeks, we held the MLK March. It started at Freedom Plaza, went very well. My community events team did a really good job putting that together. I know Awana had a lot to do with it in her department. I want to thank her for working with the Ministerial Alliance and getting a real good turnout. We had the Lake County Prosecutor Bernard Carter speak, a couple hundred people there. You know, we missed that event last year, so it was nice to get back. A lot of awards given out, so a lot of people participated. It was great to see. I know we have other events scheduled next month for Black History Month, so looking forward to that. Also, Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce held my impromptu State of the City. I know a number of you were there. I appreciate you all for showing up. It's mostly, that one's mostly centered on the business community. Obviously, it's a Chamber of Commerce, so it has a tendency to focus on the business community. We don't talk a lot about other things going on in the city, but I thought it was really great. I thought Dave Ryan did a great job. A lot of people showed up, a couple hundred people probably, thought that was really nice. The other day, attended a ribbon cutting at the Fermentarium in the Second District, actually, downtown Hammond. I know Councilman Torres was there as well as a few other people that showed up for Eighteenth Street's ribbon cutting. Drew Fox celebrated, I mean, he was the first African-American brewery in Indiana. Now he holds a distinction as the largest African-American-owned brewery in the state of Indiana. Drew and his team are just incredible, actually. I remember when they came to Hammond, they didn't ask for any incentives, they didn't ask for anything. They bought an old building that hadn't been used in decades and just said, please get out of our way and don't mess with us. And since that time, they've acquired a lot of the buildings on that block, including Old Firestone. In this case, they bought the old body shop that was basically a catty corner, just across the bike trail from the federal courthouse, and made it like a vet space, type you would see in downtown Chicago. It's really cool on the inside. They made it a vet space. That's what they call the Fermentarium, where they're going to keep all the beers that are fermenting for seven days, and when it's done, they could rent that space out that they have, which is really nice. It's like an upscale type of bar that you'd see in Chicago. They also have two apartments that they owned in downtown Hammond. Drew made sure to point out that he opened the first new residential in downtown Hammond out of everybody, and we do have a lot of things coming right now, but I know Drew is very happy and proud of what they've done out there, just buying another building and putting it on the tax rolls and making it look nice. So I appreciate Eighteenth Street Brewery for all the strides they made in downtown Hammond. 2021 celebrated a first for us in the Parks Department. The Hammond Sportsplex generated over a million dollars in revenues last year, which is incredible when you think about it. Most of the revenue is coming in in the form of Gatorade sales, hot dog sales, popcorn sales, things of that nature. I know Kim Roberts and her team has done a great job out there, working crazy hours. That place is just jam-packed right now. You know, I've been traveling the state a lot more often lately, I know you all know that, and I've noticed some things that when I travel around, it seems like other areas are trying to build up in this regard. Obviously, West Field down in Indianapolis is the Coupe de Gras in the state of Indiana. Their facilities, it's massive compared to ours, actually. It's, they have two full-size soccer fields indoor. I mean, the outdoor field's under one roof, two of them, and their basketball facility down there is used by the Pacers. So it's hard for us to compete when you have the Pacers and the Colts backing you. The Colts back them on their football, their baseball's incredible, but it's really the model that we used when we created the Sportsplex. And even traveling around the Chicago area, even, you know, the new one in Maryville, even the one in Highland, ours is the biggest and the best, and I think it's operating the best at this point. Like I said, a million dollars in revenue, something to be proud of, right there in Hammond's Third District. One of the problems we have right now is volleyball and basketball are our most lucrative sports. Soccer's doing better, but it's really a distant third compared to volleyball and basketball. We're making most of our money with volleyball and basketball. We're getting all of our big tournaments in volleyball and basketball, and I'm not saying the soccer side's not being used, it is being used. It's just more local, which is good, don't get me wrong, whereas when you see volleyball and basketball, it's more people from all over, traveling to Hammond to play their games and stay at our restaurant, eat at our restaurants and stay at our hotels. So we're, authorized American Structure Point to begin looking into what it would cost if we wanted to expand the Sportsplex volleyball side. We have the space to do it. We left footers in the ground for this possibility, and Structure Point is in the process now. They just began today of drawing up what it would look like, and if we bid it out, how much it would cost to see if this is possible. What's nice is we helped finance the Sportsplex with the 108 loan, it's called, Section 108 Loan, which is from the federal government, which is off of your HUD revenues, and we still have capacity to get this done, and we could literally finance most of this proposal using our HUD money. And I know Awana and I have been in discussion about that, and I appreciate her help. So we are in the process now of looking at expansion of the Sportsplex in summary to focus mostly on volleyball. When I say mostly, I mean 99% on volleyball, because volleyball's lucrative sport in itself. People will travel here for it. It would be a volleyball-only space. That would free up the basketball side, and the soccer side wouldn't be touched, which is the ideal combination. So we're looking into that. We're in the beginning stages. I'll keep you up to date as we learn more. This just happened today. In that same neighborhood, when I say neighborhood, in that same parking lot, I had a meeting with Craig White and Bill Hannah. Bill Hannah is the Executive Director of the Dean and Barbara White Foundation. Craig White is the son that is spearheading the YMCA renovations across Northwest Indiana. Their most recent renovation was in Sherrville in Trytown, where they took the old Omni and they converted it into a Y. As we all know, they've already changed the Hammond Y on Southeastern, and it's getting great play right now. I know the number of visits to the Hammond Y has, I think, quadrupled. Where now, we all know that the Craig and Barbara White, Dean and Barbara White Foundation made a commitment to Hammond to build a Destination YMCA, which is YMCA like they have in Crown Point. I've never been in the one in Crown Point. Everybody tells me it's absolutely spectacular. Craig White and Bill Hannah and the Dean and Barbara White Foundation are going to make Hammond's bigger than Crown Point. Let that sink in. This is a massive project we're talking about. It has a water park attached to it and all the amenities that you'd find at the Crown Point Y and the Destination Y in the same parking lot as the Sportsplex. Parking is becoming critical in that area, and they have a plan on the table that we're working through, the city and them, to fix the parking situation in that area so that we could accommodate the Sportsplex and its expansion, along with the Destination YMCA and its expansion. The Destination YMCA, if this project goes forward as planned, is, it'll be one of the biggest YMCA's in the United States. I think it's the biggest in the Midwest. Now, that's on paper. It doesn't count until it's actually in the ground, so I'm not going to start celebrating and patting people on the back until we get this done. We have to, we're trying to fundraise. I know Phil, my Chief of Staff, is coordinating on behalf of the city, working with Bill Hannah and the Dean and Barbara White Foundation, particularly Craig White, on raising some more money from the business community to see if we can pull this off, but it's massive and spectacular, and I'm excited about it. We've been wondering what we're going to do with that neighborhood for a long time, most of my administration, to be honest with you, and after that's built and the Y and the Sportsplex, I think it's busier than it's ever been, including in the heydays of the mall. I think it's busier now already, and when this is all done, that's going to be a very, very busy area, a very popular area. I only imagine economic development and everything that follows is going to be nice, so.
But what will the cost be?
It's, I don't want to peg it right now because it's not really my announcement, Councilman Mark. I could tell you we're working on it. It's big, but I don't really feel right talking about it myself because the money's being put up by the Dean and Barbara White Foundation.
But I thought I heard that it started at 45 million.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be more.
Yes, sir.
But that we're going to have to contribute more to, is that correct?
We'll have to contribute more if this goes forward, but our portion is small compared to the amount that the Dean and Barbara White Foundation would pick up. It's proportional to what we were given before, so if they increase it by millions, we would increase ours proportionally, okay? And I don't really feel right, I know what they're telling me right now, Councilman Mark, I'd love to tell you, but I'm on the record right now, okay? And if I say it out loud, I don't think it's really right that it's, this is.
I understand.
This is a godsend from the Dean and Barbara White Foundation. It's, Hammond's lucky, they chose us, especially because they just got done with one, and this one is, it's hard to even put into words how busy this area will be, and I know that with the North Shore Health Clinic located at the old Walmart there, and I know that there's plans on the table for, with this ready grant, that another development may move into the old Walmart, it seems like we got a lot of momentum with that location right now, so.
Construction for this year for that Y?
I don't know if it's going to start this year, Councilman Mark. I hope it would, but I don't know if it's going to start this year, but I think we should have a place, a plan in place, definitely by hopefully summer, where this is the number, this is where we're going to raise the money from. That's the next phase, is Phil's literally my lead person on this, working with Bill Hannah and Craig White, so, thank you. So that's the Y project. Fire Station Number Two in Robertsdale, that project appears to be moving at the time. I know we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago preparing bid specs so that Fire Station Number Two could be bid out in the late winter and awarded early spring, 12, 13, and awarded in the early spring. So we're bidding it out, it's going to be awarded in the early spring, and from that point, Council markets about a one-year construction process. The plan right now, the plan is to relocate the station south from where it currently is, not afar, closer to the Fest Ground where the Environmental Center is. That's where the new station will be, the Environmental Center is going to be relocated. I believe it's moving to Hobart under this proposal, but right now, the new firehouse is designed and being bid out, so.
Didn't redevelopment open bids this past?
They may have, Councilman Mark. I'm not sure. Kevin? No? Can you give an update real quick?
Thanks, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Councilman Mark, no, they're, they actually were looking at different ways to go about potentially bidding versus another process, so they had opened up proposals for that, but there's been a determination that they're just going to go with the regular bidding route, so that's kind of the next step, is we're going to have specs and it'll be open for bidding.
So, did you say they opened proposals the last meeting?
I don't know if they opened them, they accepted them. I'm not sure what the, you'd probably have to ask Mr. Westland about that because I wasn't at that meeting, but I know that the current plan is to go just to regular bidding, and that's going to happen in the early, late winter, early spring.
Got you, thanks.
Sure.
For those of you that have seen Station Eight in Hessville, that's the model that we're building off of, and the reason I say that is because Station Eight's ridiculously great. The firemen love it, it's brand new, it's got a large kitchen area, it's got an area where they can go outside a little bit, it's, and we're using the same concept in Robertsdale, obviously a high-profile location. We want it to look nice, Councilman Mark, and I know you have high standards when it comes to the exteriors, and we agree that this needs to be, it's going to be very visible, so looking forward to it, and we're replacing Station Two, which is a very old station. Scott?
Yeah.
Bob, 1950s-era station? The old Station Two?
Nineteen sixty.
Okay, there you go. So that, and then Station Seven in my neck of the woods is beginning the design process. That's Station Seven's right on 173rd, for that one over there, just east of Abandon School, so that process. We are in the process of working with Councilman Emerson. We've been talking about a new location for that house that would combine the old Station Four, why was that, Four on Holman? Five, excuse me, oh, five, sorry, I always mess that one up. We would combine Station Five and Station Seven. Five is the one that shut down because of flooding. Seven is the one that's located more in my neighborhood by the school, and we're trying to, that Station Seven responds to the highway a lot, whereas Station Five responds to like State Line west of Holman a lot and towards the south border, so we're trying to figure out the new location of a station that would accommodate quick response times to the highway and still get quick access to our neighborhoods in southwest Hammond, and we found a location. I'm not saying this is the location, but we feel good about this location. It's still a gas station property on 175th and Columbia, one right over, I call it Dave Ham Park, jokingly, Dave Ham, but I call it Dave Ham Park because we put that whole proposal together, but right there on the corner of 175th and Columbia, across the street from Golden Manor, southeast corner, is where we're preliminarily identifying the combined station to be built. We put apra money aside for this project, so we have the funding. It's a good location, gets us quick access to the stair areas that were previously served by Station Five, and it gets us quick access to the highway, which we need both of. It combines two stations into one, which gives us efficiencies. It'd be a brand-new station, replacing two old stations also. Station Five is a very old station, twenties or thirties, and then Station Seven is not as old. Station Seven's probably a Station Five era, or Station Two era, so combining two old stations into one, so that's the update on that. And last, I had a project in the Second District. I was trying to do a project in every district, I think I hit most of them. This one is project in the Second District, so Councilman Torres knows about this, it's called Transflow. It's a project, we currently have a plant in Hammond, smaller location. They're located to the north of the CSX tracks. To give you an idea of what I'm talking about, it's Columbia Avenue, north of the CSX tracks, so it's north of Chicago Avenue. Transflow needs access to the CSX line, so currently their building's located to the north of the CSX, and they have too small of a location. They've identified a piece of property on Chicago Avenue located just inside the Hammond Border, just north of Bishop Noe High School, that has access to the CSX tracks from the other side of the tracks, so they'd be located on the south side with access to the north. This is a company that takes steel coils off of trains and trucks them out. This new location is on a truck route. They're talking about an investment of $15 million, 10 new jobs, and a brand-new 30,000-square-foot building, and they need to go now. They got the money, they want to move, so we're in the process of working with the councilmen and working with zoning to get Transflow relocated to a newer part of our city. On the tax rolls, they're not asking for, you know, tax abatements, anything like that, they just want to go, and we want to help them, so that's my report, unless you all have questions for me. It's nice to see you again, by the way.
Anybody having questions for the mayor? Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from January 10, 2022, be placed in the file.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Excuse me. A move we play, pay claims, starting January 1st through January 19th. Claim number 232 through claim number 512 inclusive, and the amount of $3,22,320.33.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Spitali, Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. I received a communication regarding the next Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association meeting. That was to be held tomorrow, however, it's been postponed or canceled due to COVID, so I will keep you posted on that regarding the February meeting, but for now, January meeting for the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association is canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications? Does anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Yeah, I'd like to announce that HC3 is bringing back the Hessville St. Patty's Day Parade and Leprechaun Run. It'll be Saturday, March 12th. Run begins at 11:30 and the parade starts at 12 noon. You can find all the other information through HC3.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Councilman Kalwinski, do you have a date for your February meeting?
No, I do not right now.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything under communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to congratulate Coach Larry Ward Jr. on achieving his 150th win as a head coach at Star Valley, Hema, now that he has a head official for the Golden State Football Board, re-150 wins, 252,000, is a city coach, and a team of 4000 success.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything under communications?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I've received an act that we will celebrate 29th Day on February 19th, from 6 to 11 p.m. at the Hema Center, and I know that the mayor is excited to have that return to the city this year, where they'll have Lionel Leach and Tommy DiCarlo, he's in Redman in Boston, so I'll look forward to having that this year.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson, Spitali, or Torres, you guys got anything? No?
No.
No, okay. Has anybody else got anything under communications? Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'll be bringing out 22-01 from Council as a whole for third and final passage.
Thank you. Has anybody else got anything under committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Be bringing out 22-02 for third and final.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I'd like to report on the Capitol Improvements Board. We met January 18th, and we approved $554,700 for Kennedy Avenue improvements from 169th Street to 164th Place. That is for construction engineering. And, Mr. President, I have Crime Watch.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Vines, go ahead.
All righty. I'd like to announce that Wednesday, February 2nd, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. On Tuesday, February 1st, Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue, beginning at 6:30. Councilman Tyler can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Thursday, February 17th, Hessville Crime Watch will meet, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Friday, February 4th, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School at 9:15 a.m., and the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, February 10th, at Calumet College, beginning at 6:30 p.m. As usual, if you see anything suspicious, please do not hesitate to call 911, and with the weather that we're having, the snow and the cold that's coming, please do not leave your car running unattended. It's an invitation for somebody to hop in and take it for a joyride, so please, if you're warming your car, sit inside. And as usual, community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 22-01, sponsored by Councilman Torres. The petition is the Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes, and amending ordinance number 8514, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive use plan as amended for property commonly known as 5230 Holman Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, this ordinance, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of you, I supposed to. This ordinance is to amend 8514.
I need, I need, I need a motion for final passage and adoption in a second.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I move for third and final passage.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Councilman Torres, under the discussion.
Mr. President, yeah, this ordinance is to amend the ordinance 8514, and it's currently where the fountain is right now downtown, downtown Hammond, area is known as 5230 Holman, be reclassified from S1 open space and recreational facility to C3 central business district to allow for future development of the downtown area. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Do we know yet, after the fountain is disassembled, unassembled, taken apart, when it goes back up, will the fountain be functional or will it just be a piece of art? Or do we know that yet?
Brian.
Shock. To the council, the discussions currently have been to make it functional in some way. I think there is a lot of discussion of the pipes and the construction, which have not been fully developed yet. The, currently what, what we're talking about is not have the pool that is currently there where the water rains down into the pool, but is more of having water come from up, kind of like, you know, small jets of water, you know, nothing like a water park. It's not a water park, but just, you know, kind of decorative jets that would come up and maybe have some color lights on them, but all of that is just preliminary discussions. I think they're still trying to work out those details.
So in that plan, Brian, that would still use the entire pool with lighting, basically?
Well, I mean, the circumference of the fountain will still be the same, but the actual physical pool that's there, that won't be there, it'll be more of a, something coming out of the pavement.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 22-02, sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Rakos, and ordinance, amending ordinance numbers, 7685, 8200, 8564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 9755, 8854, 8930, 9017, 9061, 9194, 9252, 9359, 9375, 9462, and 9470, also known as Section 36.005 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to Hammond, is My Home Eligibility Improvement Projects.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move for final passage of ordinance 22-02.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson, seconded by Councilman Rakos and Torres, I guess, that was a tie. So, Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
The, I think the crux of this ordinance is the Governor's Parkway Project in Hessville, and it alludes to some other ones, that it'd be eligible, and the My Home Improvement Project as using gaming money, among others, to complete that project.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Specifically, like in the past with the Chicago, the Linden, Tenshin Pond, and Chicago Avenue and West Lake Quarter, where homes will need, need to be bought to complete that, in this case, there'll be only two residences or two pieces of property that, where people will have to be relocated. They want to make sure they're entitled to the same kind of, same benefits as the, in those other projects.
So, to clarify, this is money the displaced homeowner gets if they relocate in Hammond?
Yes, exactly. That, it's, it's an incentive to relocate in Hammond, given to them just like they were the other projects. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelwinski.
So the plan is to use gaming dollars for the purchase, or to reimburse people who want to move into Hammond, or stay in Hammond, that may have been affected, is my understanding. But have we looked at the possibility of redevelopment funds, or instead of tapping into more gaming money? That's just a rhetorical question, I don't think you have the answer to that, but if you want to speak? Go ahead.
Mr. President.
Megan wanted to approach on that, hang on one second, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman, Hammond is My Home is already included in gaming, so we have a $50,000 budget, that's by the new ordinance, so that amount's already in there. Timing-wise, I doubt we would exceed $50,000. If so, typically, mayor takes his gaming to cover any excess, so that is already in the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Emerson, did that answer your question, or no?
Uh, no, I, I just had a comment. You know, I had a gentleman call me back when Chicago Avenue was being done, and why he called me, beyond me, but he did, and he was upset because, you know, they're using eminent domain to take his house. Then he called me back, he actually sent me an email back and said he was very happy, he was relocating at Hessville, and he was very happy with what the city was doing for him, so he went from being angry to happy.
That's probably because he moved to my district.
Actually, listen, I, I, he bought a house in Wisconsin.
I'm joking, I know he did. Does anybody else have any further comments? Further discussion, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance 22-04, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2022.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
First and second reading, referred to Council as a whole, with a meeting set for 5:15 on February 14, 2022, and a public hearing set for February 14, 2022. Thank you.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 22R-01, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond, authorizing the filing of an annual action plan application, and designating signatories for payment voucher on letters of credit for the 2022 annual action plan programs.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 22R-01.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
This comes before us every year, this resolution is to, for to apply for the funds for the annual action plan.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? No? Hearing none, Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Under new and unfinished business, since the ordinance passed, the intent to consider goes away. Does anybody else have anything under new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I would like to, in a second, reappoint Concepcion Madrano to the Community Corporation Board.
Okay. A motion's been made to reappoint Concepcion, Concepcion Madrano to the Human Relations Board, is that correct?
The Community Corporation Board.
The Community Corporation Board.
Second.
And the motion's been made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilman Tyler, you said you looked this up, and his last appointment was in 2020?
Correct.
And this is a two-year appointment?
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Is there anything else under new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
In that COVID site, it doesn't need to be updated since our last meeting with the actual COVID hits, but the vaccine has been updated, and as of today, for 4632, 80 residents are fully vaccinated, for 4632, 720 residents are not fully vaccinated, for 46324, 216 residents are now fully vaccinated, for 4632, 201 residents are fully vaccinated, and for 4632, 201 residents are fully vaccinated. I want to update the actual site for vaccine, I mean, for COVID cases, I'll try to get those numbers out the next week.
Councilman Kelwinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have any information on what percentage of employees are fully vaccinated?
Megan says they don't? You don't have that information? No.
I don't, I don't have access to that information.
Is that information you want us to request, Councilman?
Yes, please.
Okay. Make a note of that, that we make a request, what that would be Sharon Daniels?
Yeah, I'll let you turn it. I, I can let you turn it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Alexander, those numbers, was that for the week, or is like 200?
From last meeting to this meeting.
Oh, that's, there's not like 214 people, 10,000 that are vaccinated, correct?
So the total number of vaccinations per zip code, so as of right now, for 4632, 5,761 are fully vaccinated, which is 45.9%. For 46327, 4,838, which is 45.1% of the residents in that area. For 46324, 9,975, that's 48.7% are fully vaccinated. For 46323, 10,179, that's 48.7% are fully vaccinated, and for 46394, 6,119 residents are fully vaccinated, with 51.8%. 46394 is the only area that has that, that 50% or higher threshold.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelwinski.
That's not a real reflection on Hammond, because 46394 covers Robertsdale and all the Whiting, too. Thanks.
I do understand that, but it doesn't include our zip code, so it's no way to kind of break it down.
I know.
Actually, so I don't have to give them a code.
I know.
Does anybody else have anything under new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything under new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed, there is nobody signed up for public expression, so Councilman Hammond, or Mr. Bunner, or Megan, you guys want to speak? No? Y'all good? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Meeting is over. Motion carries.
Have a good evening.